City of Salem, Massachusetts, City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in the council chamber on June 3, 2024, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the fiscal year 2025 operating budgets and capital improvement plans for the Sustainability Department, the Planning Department, Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, Market and Tourism, and the Historical Commission. Notice that this meeting was posted on May 30, 2024, at 8:39 AM, and this meeting is being recorded. Joining us from the A&amp;F Committee tonight are councilors Jurslow, Councillor Prozynski, and Councillor Stott, and myself. Absent is Councillor Varela. And from the Committee of the Whole, we have Councillors Hopworth, Councillor Marsillo, Councillor Cohen, and Councillor Harvey. Also joining us is Mayor Pengallo, Anna Friedman, our Finance Director, Justin Makouchian, if I said that correctly, our Deputy Finance Director, Chief of Staff, Lisa Peterson, and we have Neil Duffy, Director of Sustainability and Resiliency, and Tom Daniel, our Planning Director. And, oh, and we just had join us Councillor Davis. Thank you. And welcome, everyone. These public meetings are for financial review of best practice and to learn about the departments and how they utilize their funds. To view the full budget, all 702 pages of it, please go to SalemMA.gov/FY25. The homepage also includes, towards the bottom of the mayor's statement, a link to the Budget in Brief, a very helpful summary. And when you come up to present, please tell us about what your department does, anything you'd like to highlight, any significant changes in your budget, and any capital projects you'd like to discuss. And the capital improvement plans are in the larger Tabbed 7 section in the front of the book, and I will reference that section by page for the five-year capital plan. And we are starting tonight with Sustainability and Resiliency, which is in Section 19. And the budget summary that we'll be voting on is on Page 533. And welcome, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Neil Duffy, Director of Sustainability and Resiliency Department. Our department works on a number of initiatives and programs to make both the city as an organization more sustainable and resilient, but also a lot of initiatives and programs working with residents and businesses in the community to do the same. Happy to talk about specific programs or initiatives as they come up. In terms of the budget, I guess, just pointing out differences between last year and this, and some discrepancies you may see. As far as the expenditures go, I'll just point out the biggest differences in the contracted services, and that is because we, the city, prior to my starting here, had contracted with a company to develop a dashboard for our Climate Action Plan. That was, I think, three years ago where I'd initially started. That contract was for $15,000 a year. We decided not to continue to pursue that because the complications and work involved with updating that dashboard seemed like too much for our department to keep up with. It's data that we don't have regularly. It's data that's hard to find and track. I think we are continuing to get a better handle on a lot of that data, but we decided not to pursue that. And along those same lines, KLA, the company that we worked with to develop the Resilient Together Climate Action Plan with Beverly, they have what they call a dashboard. It's a rather stagnant website. And so Beverly, working with the Sustainability Director in Beverly, we decided not to continue to have that, host that page, and to just host our own pages on our department sites for now and provide updates that way. There hasn't been a lot of traffic, so that's really where you're seeing that difference in contracted services. In terms of the personnel, really, the difference between our department requests and the mayor's recommendation is just a difference between how much is coming from the revolving fund to fund a position. And then I would just say that in terms of the capital projects, something that we, our department, has spent a lot of time on and plan to spend a lot of time on in the coming years, the Energy Performance Contract with Ameresco. So there are a number of projects within the capital budget that are not under our department, but could be falling under that contract depending on whatever we decide to pursue through the next phase in that contract. I think the requests for my department are relatively self-explanatory, but happy to talk about them if there are questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. So what I think we'll do is take questions about the department and then the vote on that, on those numbers, and then we'll go to the Capital Improvement Plan section and talk about that as well. Do we have any questions from the councilors? Yes, Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Not being a member of the committee, through you to Director Duffy. I just got four things. The first one is I really want to commend you and your department for the outreach that you do in the community. Mr. Duffy has been to Pioneer Terrace twice, talking about the potential seawall in Burmese for Palmer Cove Park and at the Lower Lafayette. He did a presentation in depth, a couple of them, at Espacio, as the point is very connected to that. And we even went out together, Neil and Christian dragged me out for some door-to-door canvassing, which I thought was really good. So that's really great. We've seen, especially through the school budget, a dramatic increase in the municipal And if you could just talk to why, I mean, I'm assuming it's like everything costs are going up dramatically, but they had estimated that the utility costs were going to be about 20% through the aggregation. Could you talk a little bit about the process and how we're negotiating the aggregation?
Yeah, sir, sure. I think that the good news is that when Salem last signed an electricity contract for our electricity supply, the rates were really good. And it was sort of a very low point in the market, in the energy market. And very soon after the war in Ukraine broke out and other factors played into the energy market really skyrocketing. And so for the last few years, we really benefited greatly from that supply contract. So we were, you know, we knew we would never get back to where we were and that there would be an increase. So over the last year, we've been watching the market, knowing that our contract comes up in December, working with our broker. There was typically around now, or about a month before, you know, in the springtime is when the market's pretty low, but the winter was seeing some pretty low rates, so we were keeping an eye on it. And, you know, it is a market like anything else, so you have to, in some ways, you know, take your best guess when things look favorable. Working with the finance team and the mayor, and the school department especially, because they're heavily impacted by it, we kept watching the market. It seemed like a safe time to make a move and lock in our next contract. Turns out, looking back, that very soon after we did that, the market started to increase. And so we actually, I think, happily ended up signing our next contract with rates that were the lowest that we would have seen this year. But that still did mean a 20% increase in the supply rate compared to what we had previously. So we did, it turned out we did as best we could, so some of that was luck. A lot of credit to our broker for being on top of it and providing really good advice at the time. But we managed to lock in a pretty good rate, but we're still going to have to manage those increases accordingly and budget appropriately for that increase.
Thank you. I'll just make a comment before I ask the next question, and that, I know it's tricky. I was involved in some of the earlier negotiations, and I know sometimes you take a chance, do we do a one-year, do we do a longer term, whatever. My next thing is a concern that I've had for a long time, that the mayor knows about. I've expressed this. We have too many people, homeowners and businesses in Salem, that are getting scammed by door-to-door or just really invasive solicitations on third-party electric, which I know there's legislation in the legislature to eliminate that. Solar, and I've worked with Stacy quite a bit in trying to help individual customers, which is, as you know, these are very onerous contracts, and most of the time I really can't, you know, do much, but I'm really encouraging the city, and I know you're working on this, even Daily Table, someone, as you know, went into Daily Table and their, you know, I'm sure the person paid for the space, so the company. But I really feel like people are very much taken advantage of, and I'm hoping that the city, your department, and the city at large will continue to do outreach and educate people about, you know, best practices.
Yeah, thanks for that comment. I totally agree, and Stacy Gilb and our department has done an incredible job in helping residents when we get those questions. I do, I think we can do more to be proactive about getting that word out, to try to make sure people understand it. It is a, it's a complicated thing to try to figure out, and I agree, it's both with the supply contracts and the solar. So we're doing the best we can to provide that information. I think over, or this next year, we want to continue to do that and try to have that information more available on our department page.
I appreciate that. I know the police department has sent out notices or alerts, and part of that is because anyone who solicits door-to-door with a financial, you know, finances involved, selling something, a contract, a lease, whatever, needs to register with the police. I'm always encouraging people to ask if you've registered with the police, and half the time they run down the street. I'm just going to end with one last thing, which I'm sure you're like really happy to talk about, but July 1 is when the enhancement to the stretch code, HERS ratings and other things, and also thankfully, the specialized code goes into effect. I did mention this to the Building Commissioner when she was before us, and hoping that you guys are all ready to go and make sure everyone is aware that if they haven't been fully permitted by the end of this month, that they are going to have to fall under the new codes.
Oh, thank you for mentioning that. Yeah, we've been working with the Buildings Department. We developed an FAQ for our page that we shared with them, and hopefully, maybe this week, we'll have, we have handouts that we're planning on putting on their counter in English and Spanish. We're just, Christian and my department is just finishing the translation and formatting of that, but just to make sure so when people come in, they're aware of it as well.
Great, thank you. And yes, appreciate your due diligence following the markets with the rates and everything. It is, yeah, nearly impossible to predict, and thank you. And it's a lot of good news, you know, luck, but also your efforts to get the best rates there. Councillor Marsillo.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. I know Stacy was doing energy office hours. How did that go? Is that successful, or is it getting the word out?
Yeah, great question. It was, it's been a little bit of hit and miss. I think that when those have corresponded to other things happening, like when the food truck, when the goes to the CLC, I think there have been good crowds there. She's done some at the pantry in the Point, and I think there was a pretty good turnout there and interested people. But then there have been other times where she's had office hours, and she's just sat in her room and nobody showed up. So I think it's a little bit of doing more outreach to get the word out, but it's also trying to piggyback on something else that's happening. I think we'll continue. I don't, I don't think she's going to do it as regularly, but try to take advantage when things are happening.
Yes, thank you for that. Any other questions from the council? Okay, so move on to the budget summary on Page 533 before we move on to the capital improvement plans. Councillor Stott.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the sustainability personnel budget of $250,226, the sustainability expenditure budget of $10,405, for a department total of $260,631.
Thank you. Councillor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget in the amount of $250,226, and the expenditures budget in the amount of $10,405 for a department total of $260,631, seconded by Councillor Prozynski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own, the matter carries. Four to zero. Okay, and next we'll talk about the Capital Improvement Plan, which is in Section 7, the larger tabs in the front of the book. And for Sustainability and Resiliency, it starts on Page 260. Mr. W., do you want to speak to any of those? I see we have the appropriation for the Fleet EV Fast Chargers and Hazard Mitigation Plan Update and Resilient Together for El Punto.
Yeah, sure. So I'll just, I'll briefly talk about them in order. The El Punto, $50,000 request is to continue the work, namely the outreach and engagement work that we've been doing in that area as part of that project of the same name. It's been funded through a CZM grant the last two years. We've applied for multiple grants to continue that work, that we're hoping to find out and optimistic that we'll get more funding for that project in fiscal '25, but we may not have access to that funding until the fall. So this request is both to try to continue that work to some level throughout the summer, but also to supplement the work that we'll be doing over, hopefully, the next year or two. Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is due to expire. This request is to help us get started. We don't anticipate probably wanting to use that until after the New Year. FEMA, I think it's FEMA, tends to provide funding for hazard mitigation plan updates, so we expect and hope that that $50,000 would be coming back to us, but we may need that money available to begin the process. And the next available round for that funding won't be until next year, next calendar year. The EV Fast Charger is location to be determined, likely in the DPS lot. We have a fast charger that we're hopefully, two fast chargers we're hopefully installing at the police station. This one would be one that's for more general use for all city vehicles. As we try to electrify our fleet, we're realizing that we need a fast, dependable way to charge those vehicles, so we're exploring that. And similarly, we expect that the National Grid rebate will either cover that cost 100% or come very close to that. If it doesn't cover that cost 100%, then we would probably use part of the SREC revolving fund to make up for the difference.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it. I also really appreciated the Resilient Together. I'm familiar with the work you've done on that, and yeah, I think it's terrific. Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Regarding the Level 3 chargers, the state issued a study saying that for us to meet the target to accommodate the EVs that are in the climate bill, we need almost 800,000 new chargers. However, my concern about the Level 3 is twofold. Do we have, is this money going to cover the, you know, the capacity that we need? Because those do require a different level of, you know, electric capacity. And I'm hoping that we continue to look at expanding that, because that will enable us to get more emergency vehicles electrified, et cetera.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the councilors? Councillor Cohen?
So we're actually, hopefully, in the next week or two, going to be going out to the DPS site to get more information about the electric service there, but we anticipate that amount should be able to cover it, and typically, the incentives should hopefully cover that. I think in terms of the police station, I think, I know that the rebate that we have already been, that's already been approved by National Grid would cover anything needed there for that service.
Thank you. Anything else from the councilors at all tonight for sustainability? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Duffy, for coming in and giving us the updates on your department, and we appreciate all the work that you and your team do very much. Next, we have the Planning Department, which is with Tom Daniels, and it is Section 18. And we are going to start tonight with the Planning General Administration section, which starts not at the beginning of Section 18, but starts on Page 499, and then the budget summary is on Page 509. So that would be, yep, Page 499 to start. And then we'll move on to the Commissions and Boards. Okay, and welcome, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, so I'll speak generally about the department, what we do. As the Chair has said, we have a few budgets that roll up, but, so the Planning Department staff, most staff are working with Boards and Commissions. We support 12 Boards and Commissions in the city. And when, in addition to the support for Boards, staff are managing projects. And a project may be a planning study, it may be policy development, it may be managing a physical construction project, like a park project, or administering a program like first-time homebuyer program. Most of the work we do in those projects requires some grant support. We typically are managing, and that includes applying for and actively managing 25 to 30 grants. Right now, we're carrying about $45 million in grant funds, although 34 million of that is one single federal grant for the port terminal. So more typically, around $10 million is supporting the plans, the studies, the park infrastructure projects that we have going on. Just a couple highlights from the past year and things that are coming up. So in terms of plan implementation, which is one thing I want to say, in Salem, we do a plan and then we work to implement it rather than letting it sit on a shelf. So the Housing Roadmap, which was completed in 2022, those strategies have been, we've been working on implementing those. So ADUs and inclusionary were done. Condo conversion, still in process. This year, working on parking minimums and SROs. The Municipal Harbor Plan and Designated Port Area Master Plan, that was completed last year. The big implementation step for that has been the Offshore Wind Port. So while the permitting is done at the local level and the regulatory, I'm sorry, the real estate transaction is completed and the city's financial support is done, we are working still for that project, not the port construction project, but the industry. So working with Mass Hire and regional partners on pre-apprenticeship job training today is actually the first cohort of folks that are going through that pre-apprenticeship job training, starting today, and those sessions will be continuing for the next two years. We're also working with the North Shore Alliance for Economic Development on supporting supply chain development, so identifying businesses who could plug into the industry and those opportunities. There's a lot of education about the opportunity and certifications that businesses need to go through. This is, you know, Salem-based, but it's regional opportunity, so it's great that we have partners like the North Shore Alliance and Mass Hire, Essex County Community Foundation that have been collaborators with us throughout and are continuing. These conversations also inevitably lead to other discussions about resiliency, you know, broadly, you know, looking at economic resiliency, infrastructure resiliency, social resiliency. So that's connected in as well. The second part, you know, related to the master plan is, you know, our ongoing ferry operations and looking towards a new ferry terminal building, so work on that is, has been started and will be continuing going forward. In the policy space, so just got to plug, you know, having been the first community in the Commonwealth to be compliant with MBTA Communities Law, which was great. We've got the Flood Hazard Overlay and Climate Resiliency Overlay District that's before you. That's a major piece of work, policy work that Tom Devine's been managing for two years. I also just want to put a plug out, it's a little, not that type of policy, but the Commonwealth Development Compact is something that Salem signed on to last year with the cities of Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, and Lynn. So that's working to encourage the private, to leverage the opportunity of the real estate industry, the private sector, to support women and minority-owned businesses. And so we're one year in, we just had a workshop last month with regional folks that are in that industry to help them become more aware about it and try and do some matchmaking. There aren't a lot of women and minority-owned businesses, or investors, or developers in this neck of the woods, so it's trying to make some connections with folks closer into Boston. In terms of projects, you know, many active park projects, so the Willow's Phase 2, Palmer Cove Park, that Phase 2 project, Charlotte Forten Park, so we have shade structure that's, we just got bids back for that, the Memorial, the Charlotte Fort Memorial Sculpture that will be installed this September, and then programming that's going on there as well. The next park in the pipeline is Curtis Park, so we've gotten some, we've had enough funding to do preliminary to do preliminary conceptual design, we're moving forward on design and working on a park grant application that we'll be going in in the next couple of weeks on that. Another major project is Old Town Hall. The current phase is looking at exterior work. It's about a $2 million project. Been pursuing lots of grant funding for that in addition to the city bonding that I know we'll get to later, later tonight. Courthouses in Crescent Lot, you know, another top priority project that we're working on. I want to really thank the staff in the department. We've got, I feel really blessed to have the job that I have. I love, love the work I do and the community and the people I work with. And we've, I just want you to know, there's a really dedicated team of folks in the department who care very deeply about the work they do and the people who live here. And I feel really fortunate about that. In terms of what you'll see on the numbers side, so there's not a lot that's new, there's some things that shifted around. So up until this year, so let me, I'll just start. On personnel, we had, in last year's budget, we have a part-time planning assistant, and the formula for calculating that in last year's budget had an error in it, so there's a correction to that. It's not a new FTE, but there's a correction associated with that position. The change that you'll see in there is $35,000 that has been to the public art program, was previously carried in the market and tourism budget. And it, it made sense a number of years ago, I think, when that first started before I was here, but, you know, public art is really integrated into the work of the department and is, you know, part of, you know, really the economic development strategy. And so it made more sense for it to be integrated into the general administration budget. So there's $35,000 that had previously been in market and tourism, that's now in the general administration budget for that. We carry, there's something called DEP fees that you'll see in there, and there's an increase there. McGrath Park was one that we hadn't been carrying those fees, and Sotella Lane has an increase in those fees. These are properties, not all of which planning is involved with, we've just kind of become the repository for these fees. So these are sites that have had some contamination issue that hasn't been fully resolved. Work is going on actively now to resolve those issues so that these fees don't continue, but these are fees that the state charges us each year. For several years, they weren't actually issuing us invoices. It was kind of hit or miss in certain ones. We'd get them for, they've gotten better, so we're getting all the invoices. And that's actually how we found out about McGrath Park, you know, that was one that no one was carrying. So we're picking that up in our budget, but it's, it's just a, someone in the city has to carry it, and it made sense for the Planning Department to carry that. With the new shade structure going in at Charlotte Forten Park, there's a $3,000 setup and take-down for the shade itself that is just to preserve it. So it comes down in the wintertime and will go back up in the springtime. It is something that, in talking with other communities, it just seemed more efficient and more better for the material to have someone come in and do it that does it, rather than looking to DPS taking that on. We've had some adjustments in membership fees that have gone up, but the net is lower. We're, one of three communities that the Urban Land Institute is partnering with for two years. And so as part of that, we have free membership, so that cost has come off for this fiscal year, but it will come back in two fiscal years. And then we also tidied up, and you'll see this in the other budgets too, some, we had a line item for reproductions. We don't charge for copies anymore, so it just made sense to just pull that into office supplies. So those are the number changes that I wanted to call out as well.
Thank you. Also appreciate your staff, especially they, they come in and present and they just do a great job of explaining complicated things, and I can always understand their presentations. And yes, I appreciate your staff as well. And just a couple of quick notes. I also am looking forward to continuing implementing the Housing Production Plan. I look forward to the, you know, the parking space minimums and other ideas coming in here. And also appreciate what you mentioned about the advocacy for women and minority-owned businesses in the region here. And I think the shade will be, will be helpful at Charlotte Forten. I also know that, I understand there's going to be more activation of that space as well. And just, one of the items in the goals that stood out is working with the Salem Partnership to advocate for the South Salem commuter rail stop. So what is that, what does that advocacy look like, or any insight in that?
Sure. We've been working with the partnership for nine years, maybe? 10? 90? On the South Salem commuter rail. So Beth Debsky, the Executive Director, has kind of been the point person, the project manager, but we work very, very closely together. So we were able to get funding through Congressman Moulton's office. AECOM has been the engineering firm that has been with the project for nine years into preliminary conceptual feasibility studies. So they're taking that, using this funding and able to advance that to 15% design and in collaboration with the MBTA. The MBTA, as they are looking to electrify commuter rail, they will need a new maintenance facility on their property in Salem. And so they are, our federal funding is flowing through the MBTA, and it's working out very well as they are looking at, you know, the alignment for their maintenance facility, as we're looking at the alignment for the South Salem commuter rail station. So it's been great to have real engagement on a regular basis with them. I think one of the challenges previously is that this kind of fits and starts, we'd have a couple of meetings and then, you know, there'd be a change in staffing, so it's great to have that continuity. There'll be a public meeting this month on, thank you, the 18th, thank you, the 18th at the high school, to provide an update to the community about the project. And then we did work with the partnership on applying for a federal grant, a RACE grant that would allow to actually bring those drawings up to 100% drawings. So it's, you know, you're always hopeful, you got to try. If you don't try, it's a no, but it is a super competitive grant program at the national level, so we'll see how that turns out. Hopefully, we should find out this summer. So, for the summer.
Great, yes, it's exciting. Any questions from the councilors? Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. And echoing Counselor Merkel's comments about just thanking you, Tom, for helping us as a body to understand the things that we deal with on a daily basis here. Does the Salem 400 Planner fall under the Planning Department?
No, she's under the mayor's office.
Okay. I guess I'll go to another question, another point. Each year, we have some sort of money that we're spending on Old Town Hall and sometimes Artist Row. Seems like there's a big opportunity to connect through an arts district or something along those lines, connect downtown Salem through the Urban Art Museum into the point. But I'm not sure that I've seen a clearly articulated vision for what Artist Row is today and will be. And I think we've had little bits and pieces here and there, but do you believe there's an opportunity to articulate a more clear vision for what Artist Row could be, what Old Town Hall should be going forward as we make these investments?
Yeah, I can, I'll start with Old Town Hall. We went through a several-year process around Old Town Hall, looking at the, you know, potential role of it. And so that led to, I'm losing track of time, and I apologize for that, but we had a partner, Culture House, who did an extended pop-up series of activations there and really demonstrated a lot of interest in just the public being able to get into the space. They can also highlighted some past issues that people felt that they didn't have access to the building. Unclear how to get, how to use it for programming and things. So I think the goal that we've had for Old Town Hall has been looking, consistent with this and some other studies, is looking at it as a community arts and cultural center. So we have plans to make the physical infrastructure improvements to allow programming to happen on three floors. That's about an $11 million, $12 million project. So what we've had to do is phase that. So the first phase that's in the capital plan is $2 million of exterior and also accessibility work, which is necessary in order to allow for that programming to happen on three floors. What it doesn't do, though, it doesn't go in the building, so in, there's, there's a number of infrastructure pieces that need to happen, and they all need to happen at the same time, so there's fire suppression, HVAC, sound attenuation. You know, we have an opportunity to do geothermal that was tested out there. So that's, that's, you know, a subsequent phase, but this first phase will improve accessibility, improve energy efficiency, and, you know, do some maintenance on the brick and the base room. So it's great because it is a big first step in having that ADA accessibility into the basement. Artist Row, you know, there's, there's been different iterations of Artist Row. I think, you know, the functioning of it today is still, the common theme, I think, over the past eight years, so it's looking at as, as an incubator of sorts for creative entrepreneurs. And so with the pandemic, we didn't have the turnover in operators of the facilities there. We allowed people to extend their terms. It's meant to be a two-year sort of, figure out if a retail presence works for you. There's technical assistance that's part of that, so it's not just giving people the space to operate in, but it's connecting them with technical assistance and some trainings so that folks can learn, you know, perhaps some additional business fundamentals that maybe they didn't have previously. So we've seen former tenants are graduate into retail space. It's not always in Salem, sometimes it's in a different community. So I think that's consistent, and I see value in that because it does provide a very low-cost opportunity for people to try and expand and grow, and there is support for them as they do that. A challenge that has been is, you know, you've got lots of people on Essex Street, and how do you get them, you know, to go down there? So, you know, there's times, like with the farmer's market, I think there's a good connection that happens there. Programming of Derby Square that happens, that tries to, you know, bridge that connection. And then I think, you know, when Old Town Hall is active and has things going on, it draws people in and it draws people further down. But it's, I think it's been, I think it's been a challenge, like for people to think about Artist Row as a place to, local people I'm talking about, like, you know, this is a place I can go to get that cool gift, or my, you know, my niece's birthday, or like, my family's coming to town, or let's go to Artist Row and check out Westbury. So one of the things that we pivoted to a few years ago is trying to have that public artist in residence. So there is one of the smallest building there hosts a public artist in residence that's doing programming, trying to like bring people in for that type of activity. It also is freeing the other tenants up to do their work. Previously, there was kind of a, the tenants were expected to do programming as well as produce their goods, as well as staff their shops and manage it. So we tried to serve that. So I think, I think the fundamentals are still there. You know, I'd be interested to talk more with you about some ideas you might have or thoughts.
Sure, thank you. Another question, I noticed there was a statistic in here about trees planted this year versus last year. Does that fall under planning, or is that under DPW right now? Is that a change?
So we provide funding through CDBG, but it's managed through DPW.
It's managed through DPW.
So for, CDBG can be used for tree planting in low, moderate-income neighborhoods. So we get a list of the trees of the streets, and are able to provide funding for that.
Thank you.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Not being a member of the committee, through you to Director Daniels. Just a couple of quick notes regarding the train stop. Want to commend the mayor for securing the brownfield funding. That should help. Oh, both of you, thank you, Tom, whoever did it, it's great.
I'll call out Tom Devine.
Okay, Tom Devine. I will say that Counselor Mercillo, for people who don't know, and I are on the working group, and my personal feeling is that this project has gone from probable, I mean, from possible to probable. It just feels that way, having the MBTA in the meetings, I think is really refreshing. And I really feel like Beth Debsky and the partnership have really done a great job leading that. You mentioned condo conversion regulation ordinance. We passed our first Home Rule petition three years ago. I know, you know, the mayor mentioned that one body has passed it along, but I'm a little concerned because the session is about to end. Do you have an update of where we are, because we can't really deliberate? And the reason I bring this up is because, in my view, my personal view, is the most important thing is addressing the housing crisis for people who are already here who are being dislocated. And I do believe that, you know, Amanda has provided documentation and statistics about the incredibly gross amount of condo conversions that have happened in our community. So do you guys have a, any kind of status update on that?
I don't have any new information. I don't know if you do, Mayor.
So as you mentioned, it was reported out of the House favorably, it's on to the State Senate. Time is running out, so I think any advocacy with the State Senate would be great before their session ends to get it completed. We did inquire about whether or not it could be added as an amendment, a policy amendment to the Housing Bond Bill, the Affordable Homes Act, and leadership said no policy amendments. So we weren't able to secure it that way. But yeah, I would encourage everyone to advocate with the State Senate there, I certainly am, and try to advance it as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Two other things. Couple of years ago, Counselor Watson felt, brought in an order, I was the only one to vote against it, and I regret that now, and it was that the Planning Department would provide information every six months to the council if there's any problems with the ADU program. And I know that between the council and the mayors, different mayors, there's been a real concerted effort to continually to revise the program to make it, you know, to encourage more people to do it. My concern, which I'll also bring up with the health agent, is that we have a lot of ADUs that are not legitimate, that are not registered. And the reason I will bring that up with you and Mr. Greenbaum is because if a living space is not registered, it doesn't get inspected, it's a potential, really, a safety and a health hazard for the people who live there. So I didn't know if you were working with Mr. Greenbaum on that, but I really feel like, you know, there's got to be some way for us to get some of those property owners to convert their places to ADUs.
Yeah, we, I know we've had some, but there's heck of a lot more out there that haven't. So I haven't, I haven't talked to the health agent.
And I have one last concern, and that's Shetland Park. Counselor Jerslow and I have met a few times with PRIME, and I'm just expressing a concern that I have, is that the meetings are really superfluous. You know, they want to get us sandwiches, they want to talk about things they do in Saratoga. There's really not a lot of actual addressing of the actual housing that is potentially going to be in place. And in conjunction with that, they have been to several point neighborhood meetings where they have talked about a dislocation study that is kind of required, I think, as part of the process. And it came up at the last two point meetings that the residents really want a canvassing And it came up at the last two point meetings that the residents really want a canvassing, a door-to-door, that just having a general meeting with 20 or 30 people show up is not going to really be impactful enough. And after one of the meetings, one of the PRIME people asked me, why the heck do we have to go door-to-door? So, you know, you can respond if you want, but I'm really skeptical of the way they've been interacting with the community and with Counsel Jurzlo and myself. It's, you know, it's very fine and civil and everything is nice, but I just feel like there's a gap between what is potentially going to happen and the way they're maybe communicating with the people who live in that area.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. One is, we have the, we did the Highland Avenue corridor study, and one of the big things that came out of that, which my residents up there keep reminding me of, is that they really want a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant. So the question is, how proactive is the Planning Department in trying to find businesses that would fit certain niches that are needed in neighborhoods?
Yeah, so we're, you know, we kind of, we play a matchmaking role. We're not, we are not out, we don't own land that we're selling. But we, you know, so K Newhall Smith meets regularly with the chamber in Main Streets. And so part of that is downtown focused because that's, that's Main Streets area. But more broadly, it is looking at other parts of the city. And so, you know, we have a list of sites, of properties that either are available or we think might be available, it may not be listed on the market. And when, when there's an inquiry from somebody who's looking to do X, Y, or Z, sometimes it comes into the chamber, sometimes it comes into us, we try and feed, you know, appropriate sites. Tropical Products is actually an example. Ed Burnham, you know, was looking, and I suggested that site, and it didn't work out, and then I heard it might work out, and it ended up working out. I hear your constituents' comment about the restaurant, like, I, every time I'm on Highland, I'm like, you know, it's such a reasonable request. We did, in that study, demonstrate that there is a market for that. I think, you know, it's, it's looking at what exists. Who are the property owners today? Where are their vacancies and opportunities? And there hasn't been an alignment, candidly, about like a site that makes sense for a restaurant. Like, a new construction restaurant is, is a hard thing on a piece of vacant land on Highland Avenue, given the sites that are available. It probably doesn't pencil out. But, you know, an existing facility, existing building that could be converted, maybe that does. So, I'm kind of rambling on a bit, I'm sorry. But I hear it, like that desire. It's something.
Yeah. So I will say that there's, there's a little bit of disappointment that we're getting another fast food restaurant up there, and I get it, right? Like, and so, you know, the corridor study did make it clear that there is a certain type of business, even businesses that the residents need up there in order to have a good neighborhood, right? An active, healthy neighborhood. Coffee shop's another one. So I guess, do we ever collect information from people who have looked at sites and said, no, it's not going to work out? I would love to know that, because I would love to know how much of it is because of the design of the road, which we're trying to change and which was pointed out in that study, that we need places to turn traffic around. And DOT, at our last meeting, I felt like they were pushing back on that. And so it's, we're at odds here. And if we don't have a unified vision from everyone in Salem saying, no, we need better accessibility on Highland Avenue because, and we can point to certain businesses, like, no, it's not going to work out because it's hard if you can't turn your car around, right? Like, it's like Route 1 out there. It's just difficult to navigate. So that's why, that's where I'm coming from. I think we need, we need more focus on Highland Avenue. I think there's a lot of potential there, and we've talked about it before. There's a lot of unused land that's kind of tucked away here and there, and, yeah, so I would love more.
Yeah, I can, I can let you know that every time I talk with someone about Highland Avenue that's kicking tires about they want to do X, Y, or Z, I say, what the neighbors really want is a restaurant, like a sit-down restaurant. And, you know, some people, it's, it's a complete conflict, and other people say, well, maybe we can incorporate that. And, you know, none of these have materialized anything, but I want you to know that it's something we actively raise with.
Yeah, and I know that, like, when projects go to the planning board and they talk about, well, we're going to have this commercial space, and so, sure, the neighborhood wants a coffee shop, and yeah, sure, and then it doesn't happen, right? Like, Traders Row, to be perfectly honest, was all about that, and then they put in an insurance company. Like, it just, people are still very upset about that. And I know you can't say that you need to put in X, Y, Z business, but I think we need, I don't know, we need to be a little bit more honest in these discussions with the developers, too, that they're making statements in public meetings, you know, to get their approvals, and then they don't follow through. And it's not, you know, it's just bad. Highland Avenue needs more support. The other thing I'm going to put in a plug for the Broad Street Cemetery, that, you know, it is a very, very old cemetery. We're going to have, hopefully, sometime very soon, the old senior center is going to be redeveloped, and, you know, they did agree to, to replace the fence that's closest. But, you know, there's sections of that cemetery that are falling apart and could be hazardous, actually, including the steps to get up the hill. So I, you know, I think we, I know that there's a plan on the website, but it's not funded. Like, things aren't funded, and so I will.
We did, we did this fiscal year, current fiscal, last fall, and it ended this winter. Some of the first slug of restoration work for headstones. But that's something that's going to be phased over multiple years. And the needs are great, and, you know, the, you know, Howard Street Cemetery doesn't have the plan, and there's desire there as well. Charter Street, you know, there were improvements made there, but it's ongoing, you know, it's never done. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, by looking at sort of regular funding for historic cemetery work, you know, some, the Cemetery Commission has funding for some cemeteries for, I can't, I don't know all the parameters around that, but it is, you know, I agree.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember the Highland Avenue study. It was years ago. Yes, it was during COVID. It was, it was very interesting. They had all the ratings, and it was real-time feedback from us that were on Zoom, and what everybody wanted, and the dots and the comments, and the turnarounds that, you know, they had, they had talked about possibly on there. So it was interesting. Any other questions from the counselors? Yeah? Okay, so we'll go to the budget summary on page 509 before we go to the capital improvement plan. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Planning General Administration Budget, personnel line item of $686,804, and the expenditures budget of $134,012 for department total of $82846.
Second.
Thank you. So Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget in the amount of $686,834, and the expenditures budget in the amount of $134,012 for a planning department total of $820,846. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? So I see three hands plus my own. The motion carries four to none. Okay. Next, we have the Conservation Commission, which is also in Section 18, but at the very beginning, with the budget summary on 490.
So the, excuse me, the budget change here is for the clerk. The, oh, did you, yep. The Conservation Commission meetings just are running longer than they had been previously, and so we're increasing the clerical amount to compensate for that. That's, that's the only real change there. I will note a staffing change. So Kate Kennedy, who was our conservation agent planner, left, and so we have been interviewing and hope to have a person filling that position very soon. And Tom Devine has been covering with assistance from Beals &amp; Thomas as well.
Okay. Great, thank you. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Merkel, to Mr. Daniels. Two things. One, I know there's showing up on the city's website two vacancies for CONCOM, and I do know, I spoke to someone who said they were applying for the position. I don't know if they did, but I know because of the legal restriction on the number, that creates an issue if they don't, you know, quorums or whatever. Do you feel you'll be able to fill those positions soon?
Yes, we actually have three people we're meeting with this week, so.
Great.
We, one of them was unclear about the role, so we'll hope.
Back last year, we changed the ordinance to factor climate into the methodology, that they could use climate to make decisions. I go to most, if not all, the CONCOM meetings, and I haven't really seen that being done. Is, is this something that is being talked about? Because it would be really great for when a developer is before the commission, that, you know, there's like a set, one or two or three questions that they ask them. And I'm just encouraging that to happen because this is a really positive development for Salem, that we are factoring this methodology into the decision-making. And, you know, nothing, no board addresses has as much jurisdiction over wetlands and other, you know, some of the big decisions as the Conservation Commission.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions regarding the Conservation Commission? No? All right. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Conservation Commission Budget, personnel line item of $32,230, expenditure budget of $1,513 for a department total of $33,743.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget in the amount of $32,230, the expenditures in the amount of $1,513 for a Conservation Commission total of $33,743, seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? So, let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The motion carries four to none. Next, we have the Planning Board, also in Section 18, which starts on page 493, with the budget summary on page 496.
Yeah, so for this one, again, it's similar to the administration. We're just moved the reproduction line into the supplies. That's the only change here. It's not a change in dollar amounts, just in terms of where it's listed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding the Planning Board from the council? No? Okay. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to recommend, make a motion to recommend approval for the Planning Board Personnel Budget of $34,726, Planning Board Expenditure Budget of $3,763 for department total of $38,489.
Second.
Thank you. So Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget for $34,726, and the expenditures budget in the amount of $3,763 for a Planning Board, a total department of $38,489, seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The motion carries four to none. Next, we have Market and Tourism, which starts on page 514 with the, it's only expenditures for Market and Tourism, and that's, the budget summary's on 520. So we start on 514.
And so, excuse me, this, this is where we had that $35,000 for the public art program that was moved into general administration. The Destination Salem funding last year was $250,000, so that was increased during the year to $282,000, so that's constant, although it is a change from what the budget was as of July 1. The budget was amended during, during this fiscal year. The other, other change on that is the $150 in advertising. Again, we just moved that.
Hold on a sec.
All right, thank you. So that $150 was moved to downtown programming just because it made sense, rather than having that separate line.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? No, seeing none. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel, through you to Mr. Daniels. I'm just curious how the replacement of the new executive director is going. Do you have any insight into that?
Sure. So the executive director for Destination Salem is, is open. We are, I'm on the interview committee, so we are in the process of reviewing applicants and expect to have interviews, initial interviews in two weeks to start that interview process.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Market and Tourism Expenditure Budget of $309,550.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the Market and Tourism expenditures in the total of $309,550, and that brings a department total of the same, $309,550, seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? The record show, I see three hands plus my own. The motion carries four to none. Great, thank you. So that brings us to the capital improvement plan, and so we're, oh, sorry, I check-marked the wrong one. You are correct, the Historical Commission, which starts on page 522, with the budget summary on page 525.
So on this one, again, we have consolidation of the postage and photography supply lines, just combining that with office supplies, no increase. The one increase under expenditures here is under dues and subscriptions. So we previously have had a membership with the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions. Mass Historic is actually picking that up for us, and so we're interested in a new membership with the National Trust. It's the National Trust Historic Preservation Leadership Forum, provides trainings as well as some eligibility for some funding. We're not, or for some funding programs, we're not exactly clear on what those are, but it does provide the training opportunity. The other change on personnel is similar to the Conservation Commission, increasing the clerk hours. Hiscom meetings have run much longer on a consistent basis, and so we're trying to allocate for that here. for that here. Excuse me.
Thank you. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, through you to Mr. Daniel. I do agree with the increased expenditure. A lot of the Historic Commission meetings have a focus on the demo, delay waiver, and there's a lot of them, because the criteria is rather broad. So I do agree about that. I do want to express a concern. I've had a few properties in my ward that are not in the historic district, but because of the ordinance, they require a waiver to move forward. And there are some commissioners that are asserting, it was brought up at a recent meeting where the chair mentioned to a couple of commissioners that if it's not in the district, that they don't have the same jurisdiction to, you know, colors and historicness, that they're, once that they assign a value, that it's substantially historic, for whatever reason. But there seems to be the same criteria is being used, and in one case in my ward, it almost resulted in the project not going forward, which would be a real shame, because the property owner was actually restoring the seawall at his cost. And none of the properties on that street are, even look historic. So just mentioning a concern, because I do believe the waiver is, it's important to have that for every property that fits the criteria, but I don't believe that the intent of the ordinance was to then treat any property, wherever it may be, as if it's in the historic district, if that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Any other questions? No more on the Historic, the Historic Commission? Okay, then Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Historic Commission budget, a personnel line item of $38,198, an expenditure line item of $1,338, for a department total of $39,536.
Second.
Thank you. So Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the Historic Commission personnel budget of $38,198, expenditures in the amount of $1,338, for a Historic Commission total of $39,536, seconded by Counselor Pozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. Okay, now it's time for the Capital Improvement Plan. So that is back in the larger tabbed section in the front, Section 7, and it is, it starts for the Planning Department on page 258.
Would you like me to just sort of run through the list of projects? Sure.
Yes, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, so Salem Willow's Phase 2, this is, you know, down by Hobbs. It's reducing impervious surfaces and making some trail improvements down in that area that, in addition to this funding, there is a park grant funding of $500,000. That project will be wrapped up about this time next year. Curtis Park, I mentioned earlier, so we are through conceptual design. We are applying for a park grant that would, if we're successful, then that will, this will be the next park project funded with a park grant, that's a $500,000 grant that we're hoping to get, to advance that. These next two are at the port. The first one is a match for a federal grant, the PADP, Fiscal 21 Grant, is something we secured before Offshore Wind was even, you know, known to be coming here. What we're fortunate is that we're able to leverage the work that Crowley is doing there to maximize this grant, those grant dollars, and then this is a contribution towards that. The Ferry Terminal Building I mentioned as what we're looking to advance, it's, we've candidly, it went on hold while we were focused on the Offshore Wind project, and so we're looking to advance that. We're getting a owner's project manager onboard, and then working with, we'll be looking to get a designer to come up with a program for the Ferry Terminal Building, and then we'll be seeking capital dollars for that. We anticipate looking to the Seaport Economic Council for some of that funding. The Highland Avenue Area Trail Plan, which is coming from the Open Space and Rec Plan, has a connection back to that Highland Avenue study as well. This is an implementation step from the Open Space and Rec Plan, where it's looking, there's several informal trails off of Highland Avenue, and, you know, they're not all connected. And so this is looking at like, how might, and there are some formalized trails, but how might these things be connected so that it works better for residents there to be able to get around? You're still going to have to get across Highland Avenue, like that, that is, you know, fixed, but, you know, on either side, baking better connections. So this is partial funding for that study that would then, you know, we would look towards implementation over time of that. Let's see. Church Street Lot Development Goals, so this is coming off of the downtown parking study that I know the Director of Transportation talked about last week, which should be wrapping up in the next month or so. And looking at the Church Street Lot, you know, what are some next steps there for potential investment, you know, community visioning, you know, some studies? This is not a ton of money, but it's something to help start. It may actually be looking to apply for other grant dollars, so starting, starting additional analysis and engagement around that property. The next item here is Artist Row Roof Replacement Project. So this was something that we had intended to do earlier this spring. The bids came in, you know, double of what our cost estimate had been, and it just made absolutely no sense. And so there are leaks going on there. Each building has kind of a different issue, and so this is working to get as big of a bang as we can for these dollars in terms of fixing the issues that are there. This next line of planning policy and zoning studies and implementation is to help us, oftentimes, so as I mentioned several times, we're pursuing, pursuing grants, and sometimes we need more money, or sometimes there's a quick turnaround, and, you know, sometimes, you know, we're talking to the Finance Director and the Mayor about like where we can grab some money, or we're juggling schedules, or we're coming to the council seeking funding. And so this is to try and ease some of that, to make it more efficient, so that, you know, we're still pursuing grant dollars, but when, when we have a short-term need, being able to move without going pause on the project we're working on, or needing to put a different project on pause in order to access that funding, or being able to initiate something a little bit sooner than what the grant program would allow us to do. Some, you know, many grant programs, you can incur costs until you actually have the grant secured, but there's pre-work sometimes that this would allow us to do. Dixon Chapel, so super excited to, you know, for the stained glass window restoration project that wrapped up, really beautiful, and this funding is looking to continue the restoration, the exterior restoration work of the chapel. Old Town Hall I mentioned, so this is a $2 million Phase 1 project. We, actually, we call it Phase 2 on here, because we've done all this preliminary Phase 1 work, but this is that exterior work that I was describing, the ADA accessibility, energy efficiency, you know, tuck pointing, and, you know, we are, we did get a $200,000 grant award last month from Mass Cultural Council. We have three other grant applications that have either gone in or are about to go in for several hundred thousand dollars additionally, so trying to make this phase whole. The Fort Lee Preservation and Management Plan, so this is actually all grant-funded, that's looking to, there is, there was a Fort Lee Preservation Plan done, it's now out of date, and this is looking to update it with, it's really interesting, sort of laser 3D scan of it, looking at interventions that will protect the fort and have a management plan that is achievable. There's a lot of growth that's happened there, there's a lot of trails that are there, bike trails, some of them are actually causing damage to the historic resource there, you know, there's a tension, because obviously, a lot of people love, you know, the trails that are there and using them, but, but the fort itself is being damaged. So this is looking to do some analysis to advance a management plan that, again, would have capital dollars associated with it in the future. The last two things are coming from the revolving account, and these are ADA and non-ADA repairs and maintenance for Old Town Hall and Artist Row.
Great, thank you. This is, this is all really interesting. I, like Counselor Hepworth had said, it's, it's great to see the focus in here on Old Town Hall and Artist Row. I'm also curious, the Church Street Lot Development Goals, is that to research for ideas, or are there any being tossed around, just, and that's for more specific thoughts on it? Just curious.
Yeah, so the, you know, the parking, the parking study that is wrapping up in the next, next few weeks was looking at, you know, what's the, what's the supply currently? What's the demand, you know, as new housing comes online downtown? Like, how does it all equal out? And, you know, if you think about in the future, at some point, the downtown parking garage that exists, you know, will be cost prohibitive to continue to maintain. At some point, it won't make sense anymore. And so you can't lose 920 spaces without figuring out where those are going to go. The Church Street Lot, you, you know, we joke about whenever a developer comes kicking the tires, they always say like, well, what about that nice big flat rectangle in the heart of your downtown? You know, why don't I just take that off your hands? And, you know, it's not, it's not a yes, because that plays an important role in thinking about, you know, parking supply today, but if the downtown garage were go-to-way. So there's, you know, going back to, I think, 2009, we had Urban Land Institute here looking at that, that parking lot, because the conventional thinking at that time was just build a couple decks on top of it and keep it parking. And so we asked ULI to give us their thoughts, and they said, well, do you understand how your parking supply is working today in your operations? We didn't. We didn't have any data, you know, we didn't have the systems in place. We had, you know, blocks of downtown that had four different types of regulated parking on it, like, it didn't make sense. So that's all been cleaned up. But, you know, they did look at that time at some kind of housing, like, there were a couple of different concepts of housing development with some parking and some potential retail. So, you know, we don't have any, again, I'm being long-winded, I apologize for everyone. There's no preconceived notion, there's going to need to be parking, whatever is built there will need to accommodate parking for whatever those uses are, as well as being mindful of, you know, parking that's lost.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you. That is helpful, too, because I was wondering, too, if it kind of incorporates a re-envisioning, you know, for that area where you have, you know, the mall, and like you said, a garage possibly aging out, and so thinking if we're losing our, any, some of that parking there, if down the road, we're, we're losing the garage as well, if they're just kind of looking at that whole, whole area conceptually. So, thank you, that, that is helpful. Counsel Harvey?
Thank you, Chair. Quick question, Menzel Field?
Yes.
I noticed, you know, it's not on next year's budget. I'm told that contracts went out, or estimates went out, to get bids for, to finish that project. I mean, we're going on three years now. That's been an eyesore for the neighborhood for three years, and not to mention that, who oversees the projects? Is it you guys, or are we hiring somebody to oversee the projects as they're being done and managed?
So, so that project is complicated because of the contamination, the involvement of EPA, which has been really helpful, because paying for a lot of the work. And so, yes, it's been a long time. In terms of management of park projects more generally?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's staff, the projects I've mentioned are managed by planners, in terms of, you know, the bidding, the visioning, the conceptual design phase, as well as the pursuit of grants, and then the management of the bidding process, we're working with purchasing, and, you know, the actual construction.
So the end result falls on somebody in your department that's overseeing the project? My question is basically, because if you look at Gallows Hill, that ball field is supposed to be senior varsity team ball field. They have no dugouts, they have no third baseline fence, they have, got to be careful how I say it, a fence they have to put up in the outfield every time they have a game that falls down during the game. There's no scoreboard, there's no lighting. I'm just curious as to, you know, if we're going to do a project like that and have it funded, why isn't it being done to, I mean, they can't even hold a regulation game there if they had to. If they made it to the States, they'd have to use a different field. I mean, and we're calling it our home senior team varsity field. I mean, to be honest with you, it's kind of like, it's an embarrassment to invite another city into our city, and we're calling that our varsity field. It's, I mean, I'm just curious as to why projects are done and not completed properly.
Yeah, so I think each park project has a little different story to it, and I will say that, so planning staff are managing the project, that the scope of that project is approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, you know, the scope of that project was something that was approved by the Park and Rec Commission. You know, it doesn't have all the, the elements that you're talking about. I know some of those things were, were desired, but the funding wasn't there for like, you know, the scoreboard that you're talking about. So it's working within, you know, trying to manage the budget for it. But the elements, you know, the, the prioritization of park investment projects outside of the signature parks is something that's done, it's informed by the Open Space and Rec Plan, working with the Park Superintendent, and then the Parks and Rec Commission. And then what, what the scope of, like, you know, if there's a need for a new X, like the pickleball court, or there needs to be a new, an extra basketball court, that's something that the Parks Department informs about for the scope of the project, and then they approve that scope, and then we manage the implementation of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Phil?
Yep.
It was at the same time. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to just go back to the Church Street Lot line item again. It seems, it just seems like a jump to me, like, we haven't seen the downtown parking study, how do we not know Seawall Lot might, or is this, I'm saying that wrong, the lot by the YMCA might, or the Jerry's Lot, or Riley Plaza? Like, why are we putting $25,000 at Church Street? I'm not saying Church Street doesn't have potential and should have additional research, but I feel like we're jumping ahead a little before seeing the plan, or the results of the study that was done.
Yeah, I think that, you know, this is looking to have something funded to be able to move on. I, you know, the other, I've, I've been part of the planning process, and, you know, those other lots are not going to, they have some potential for some things, but they're other lots are not going to, they have some potential for some things, but they're, they're So it's, it's knowing what this, what the analysis has shown to date.
Counselor Ms. Lo?
Thank you, Chair. So I think that what, what we would be interested in is a larger-scale parking study instead of a targeted one that's targeting development of some sort, right? Like, it doesn't make sense that we don't have a larger-scale city-wide or downtown-wide parking study to know how, how are cars utilizing this, this paved space? Like, I think that's really important, and I think that that's what the Counselor is getting to. And also, when is this study going to be done, and when are we going to see it? Because I don't know anything about it. I have no idea what, what's in that study.
Yeah, so, so the study is supposed to be done in the next, the draft is past due, I'll just put it out there, but we are expecting the draft in the next couple of weeks that we'll be, you know, reviewing and getting feedback on. And so, you know, depending on that turnaround this summer. But that scope is, you know, what we talked about a couple of years ago for it, and as I said, it's looking at how is the system being utilized today, you know, with the anticipation, you know, if you look at the lots that Counselor Stott rattled off and others, you know, to the extent that there may be development on some of them or not, like, how, how does the system balance that out? And, you know, with that, it's also looking at, you know, one of the things we talked about in, in the scope of the study was, I forget the percentage, but, you know, the majority of our public parking supply is accessed off of Church Street, which maybe doesn't make the most sense. Maybe things need to be distributed a little bit. And so, you know, that's, that's part of it as well. But structured parking is, you know, incredibly expensive, it doesn't pay for itself in, in a market like Salem, because we just, no one would be willing, well, I think very few people would be willing to pay the cost that it would be, you know, in order to pay for it. So it's looking at how do you connect that with development, and then what kind of subsidy is coming in as well. I think the parking study will, you know, answer some of this, but it's, it's not, I haven't seen the draft, but like, it's not, it's not giving you step-by-step on everything, like, do this, and then this, and then this, but it's showing, it's doing an analysis of how the current operations are having, you know, the, the top level is, there is adequate supply, it's just, you know, it's what we said in 2009, there's adequate supply, it's just not always where everybody wants it to be. So how do you manage it, you know, for people who are more price-sensitive to have those options?
Okay. I, I just, you know, I, I think that when this first came up, this study and the funding for it, I think the same comments were made, that we need a larger study, we need, you know, why just focus on one spot? So just to be clear.
Yeah, it is all of downtown. It is all of downtown. It's, it's Church Street Lot Study. The parking study is looking at Universal Steel, Church Street, Sewell, Riley Plaza, Front Street, Clop Alley, it's looking at all of them.
Oh.
That's what the downtown parking study is doing.
Okay, so we just need to see the study?
Yeah.
Probably get a presentation from somebody to understand what's in the study, and, okay.
Yep.
That's fine. To go back to the baseball field.
Yeah.
When we're doing a project like that, and it's supposed to be the high school baseball field, for instance, is, is the school putting in any money? Are they helping to design this? Are they putting in their list of what they need to have a, you know, a varsity-level baseball field? I'm just curious, why this, why, why is this on parkland, which is fine, but was there anything even, was there anything asked of the school department to put towards it since it's a varsity baseball field?
So I wasn't involved in the discussions back when that was all being considered, so I, I don't have in-depth knowledge. I know that there were alternatives looked at, like having the field, having the, the baseball field at the high school, and that was found not to be viable. I, I don't know why. We could go back, I imagine the park superintendent would be able to comment on that, because I believe she was part of all those discussions, but there
Yeah.
It was an eternal analysis that was done, and, you know, this Gallows was the preferred location, understanding that it was a tight configuration, that, that was clear. But that's, that's all I feel comfortable commenting on.
Yeah, I, you know, I, you put in, you put in a varsity high school baseball field there, and that really restricts the use by the public in a public park. And so, yeah. I'm not, it's not that I'm against it, I just think that they need to put some funding into this also to make it what they need. I, I don't know.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and we'll get to all the comments, and also just, as an FYI, the Parks and Rec and Community Service will be Monday, June 10th. But of course, ask these questions now as well, just throwing that out, because this is a good conversation, and I, I want to, I wanted to see it continued also with Parks and Rec when that comes in. I, I think Counsel Cohen was next.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I wasn't going to bring anything up, but Counsel Harvey and Counsel Ms. Lo brought up some points I wanted. Ironically, I was at the high school today at the Unified Games banquet, and the athletic director was all excited because our team, our baseball team, the high school team, won unexpectedly, and another team lost, and that enabled Salem to have a home game for the playoff, which they have to have at Salem State. And I'm not saying baseball, you know, we have an evolving society where people play in other sports, but I've brought this up, and I know it's probably more in Park and Rec, but we just took out the baseball field at Palmer Cove Park, which used to be the main field. And so we're really limiting, as long as we're playing a sport and people go and they enjoy going and seeing it, we're really limiting our options. So I just want to mention that, I know it's not necessarily planning, but I think it's a, it's a, it's an approach that has to be done by Park and Rec and the city and the schools or whatever, because we're not giving the kids the same ability to, to enjoy themselves.
Any other questions regarding the capital improvement plan? No? Okay, just want to check, check my notes here. I think, Anna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we, we've gotten everything we wanted to achieve tonight for, for our votes, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Daniel, for all the hard work by your department, for being here tonight and giving us, giving us all the updates, appreciate it. And of course, from our, our finance department, appreciate both of you being here as well, and the Mayor, and the Chief of Staff. And I will entertain another motion. Motion to adjourn by Counselor Stott, seconded by Counselor Jurislaw. All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you.